...is exactly the same plan. There's been nothing that has been changed to the plan. The Bob and I, I am preparing for this, did not give a good enough application to explain exactly what we were on. But the plan you saw has not been, like the, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the variants that we are speaking precisely and have given, uh, the board and the town and this, that these, uh, the lot size, it's close at five acres. With the combined lot, we have the largest lot on the street at point nine two acres, which means there's a variance of four point zero eight acres. Road frontage on Route sixty seven, the requirement is two hundred feet. Now we have one hundred and seventy five point one five feet, or a variance of twenty four point eight five feet. Lot width, two hundred, the variance we are, uh, we have one hundred and seventy five point one five feet, now the variance is twenty four point eight five feet. Front setback, we are making a setback because there are restrictions within, uh, the deed for these properties. The, uh, front setback off of Route seventy, sixty seven would be a hundred and fifty feet, that's the requirement. We have seventy five feet, and seventy five feet is the variance. This would be the largest variance for any of the homes on this particular street. Front setback, Country Club Drive, at the hundred and fifty feet. We have an eighty-five foot setback on Country Club Drive, which means the variance is for sixty-five feet. Rear setback, yeah, within this zone is seventy-five feet, and again, this is a tradition five-acre zone. We have forty feet, so we're asking for thirty-five feet. Structural coverage, if you look at the building window that is on the plan, that was submitted to you, uh, in the spring, uh, we have set it out, so there's four thousand seventy-five square feet of building space required, and we, uh, the variance requested five thousand two hundred and fifty, thus, we have a need for a variance of one thousand one hundred and seventy-five feet, or three point nine percent. All of these variants are required because the lots are way too small within the zone that they, uh, were permitted in. This applicant has the right to build two homes on these two smaller lots. What he's trying to do is relieve some of the pressure in the neighborhood by the two lots, thus, we need those variances, and again, the plan is exactly what the plan was in the spring.
All right, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else for public comment? That's what we do. Public hearing, Country Club, uh, James O'Brien with Hopeable Trust, area variance, two fifteen one twenty-seven, two fifteen one twenty-eight, is now open. Anybody who would like to make a public comment? Oh, there we go. Lily, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Uh, we're not getting anything at all. Any chance anybody can get through?
Mr. Chairman, you can have, uh, the applicant, you can have the public call. Area code five one eight, eight eight four, two seven six four, and I will put it on speed here and have, you'll communicate.
You have to read this in.
But I don't need the email. They can unmute them. Um, I don't want to unmute them.
Yeah, well, I might, I'll read for, um, while we're trying to get a hold of Lily, I could, uh, I guess I could read this into the record. Uh, this is a, an email from Lily B., from August twenty-fourth, to Tina. Lily, are you there? Well, it was worth a shot. This is, uh, coming from Lily and J.C. Byers, who live at Eight Country Club Drive. Uh, they are very concerned about the, uh, current well issues, neighbors on the right of the property, who already had to fill a second well. The first drive up after thirteen months of owning the home, we have noticed well issues. Uh, just questioning how the house could be built safely, uh, and put in the property across the street, right off the road, where the property next to, uh, the lot has a well in the back and another to the, to the front. Uh, in other words, the wells are close to this property we're looking at. Uh, who is to cope when we no longer have water? Our water is now, or if our water is poisoned and/or drinkable. When our water is gone and we need to relocate, how to get, this is going to return or selling our home, we have no longer have water. Property value will be gone, clearly. We seek compensation from knowing parties to make this right so we can afford to live. Voting, please consider the tax-paying citizens who already live on Country Club Drive, already struggling with the wells. And voting yes on building, uh, uh, I guess it would be no on building a lot, you'd have us all. Um, Bill, is it possible you could, hopefully she can hear, could you answer some of this? We had talked about it a little bit. Then let her know what the, you know, what the zoning board does and doesn't look at in this decision. Can you hear me, Bill? You're gonna have to unmute. There you go.
Sure. Um, I think it's important for, um, any member of the public to understand that this is one of two species of variances that this board typically looks at. Uh, the first is a use variance, that's not this. This is an area variance. If the Zoning Board of Appeals determines that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment, if any, to the health, safety, and welfare of the community on a balancing test approach, then the zoning board has the authority to grant the area variance that this applicant is seeking, and that any applicant seeks before this board. One of the things that, uh, the inquirer from the public should know is that although the applicant should offer proof before the zoning board, there actually is no burden of proof. And this is in contrast with the use variance, where the burden of proof is on the applicant. In either case, the zoning board will make its determination, and this is important for a member of the public and for the applicant to know, but the zoning board makes its determination based on the record that's before it. And I think finally, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, finally, uh, with respect to the area variance, in doing the balancing test, the board considers whether or not to grant the variance based on five specific factors that are enumerated in the town code for the town of Milton and also in state law, and no other factors. But that's really the focus of this board this evening on this application. By way of background, there's one other, um, differentiating characteristic of this application, and that is, as the applicant's counsel, Mr. Tui, has correctly pointed out, this is an application for a rehearing. The application for the rehearing simply arises from the circumstance where the face of the application itself appeared to be somewhat inconsistent with a plan. However, the applicant has come back to the board and provided the memorandum explaining how that circumstance arose. The board, in terms of its historical view of this particular application for the rehearing at last month's meeting, voted unanimously to rehear the application. The unanimous standard is required again by the state standard, and in this instance, uh, this evening, the applicant is required to obtain a unanimous vote of the board in order to prevail on this rehearing application. And at this point in time, what is before the board is, as the applicant's counsel has stated, a variance request, um, cheap, if you will, that establishes, um, the variance request, the code requirements, and then the differential, if you will, between the code and what the as-built condition is proposed to be. There's really nothing more to it than that analysis in this evening's meeting on this application, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Could I be heard for a moment? Sure. One of the things that is, is key is that my client has the right to build two homes on these two tax parcels. They are legal lots. They would have to go through Mr. Lewis to make sure that the distances between well and septic, not only on this property, but on the other properties, are building code compliant. What we are attempting to do is to give twice the space for only one house, so that we are eliminating one structure that could have an impact with regard to groundwater on this particular street. We are lessening the possibility of there being a problem by combining these two lots as opposed to exacerbate the problem by building two homes. This is a net gain for the entire street with regard to building residential, building homes on this avenue. Thank you.
Okay. We have a written response here, just a moment. Can you hear me?
No.
No?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna read this into the record. Uh, "My name is Lily Byers, and my husband and I own property across the proposed building lot on Country Club Drive. We have written the board letters and have spoken at last month's meeting with regards to said property, and our neighborhood concern over drilling another well, we already struggle with water issues on our small street. This past Tuesday, zoning board member Eric," that's me, "paid me a visit, uh, at my home to kindly inform me that though we have concerns, it is not the position of the board to take those concerns into consideration when voting." Which is not quite what I said. I said that sewer and water positioning is really state regulations and something that we don't deal with, when she was worried about contamination of the well. Um, "And the sole purpose is to ensure that the developer adheres to zoning laws in regards to the property." Uh, that's, I don't know how to respond to that. "I must say, you know, it's quite taken aback, primarily due to the fact that on two occasions, a letter been sent out to the town so citizens can voice concerns for the board to review before meeting. In doing so, you acknowledge the problems I and other neighbors have, and yet see how the review process can be waived prior to voting." Not sure of that. Uh, "We are a small street of five tax-paying homes. Like most suburban residents, we get our water from our private wells. We ask that you strongly consider the risks in building this property and the ramifications of your proposed action for water supplies." Okay. "We are the ones that live here, that drink this water, who work all spring and summer to grow our gardens, feed our families through the year. I urge you as a fellow community member to see what negative effects this could have on our small street. Please do consider what I've said in the past few meetings when you vote. Please do think of us and our neighbors, and what could be the end of our wells, and how you would react in the same situation." Thank you for your time. Thank you. Um, I do have a question for Bill. Looking for him. Oh, there you are. Um, Mr. Tui was saying, well, actually, it's for Bill Lewis. Uh, Bill, uh, what Mr. Tui said, is that true, that he could build two houses there without having any kind of a variance?
He, he has two lots of record that are there. The only, the only thing he would have to do is meet the building code. That our zoning, this is a, this is actually a, a good example of our zoning, the change of the zoning to five acres. He has two non-compliant lots, non-conforming lots, uh, that were put in play in the sixties. Uh, we changed our code to larger lots to have the, the appearance of larger lots in the R-two, and this is basically what the code, um, the applicant is trying to, uh, make the lots conforming in any way that he can by combining the two lots, making one. But yes, correct, he has two lots of record that are, um, that he's paying taxes on, and they are considered building lots if he could make, if he could get a, uh, envelope of a structure on the lots.
Anything you want to add to that, uh, the other, Bill?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman, then.
Okay. All right, any board members have anything they want to say? I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing.
Make the motion to close the public hearing. I'd second that. Yes.
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. McNabb?
Yes.
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. McNabb?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Tui.
Thank you very much. Have a pleasant evening.
Okay. At seven twenty-six, uh, at seven thirty, we have a public hearing scheduled for Brad and Samantha Pigalinski, if I say it right, uh, sixty-seven Market Drive, area variance. We'll have to wait four minutes, but three minutes to, uh, can we start earlier, Bill, or?
No.
Unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, you cannot start earlier, and I apologize, because if we had another case that would be quick, uh, we could take that case, but I'm not sure that that's your pleasure.
Uh, it's fine, so.
I'm sorry, you can't. Yep, can't start early, I'm sorry.
Look, we gotta, gotta wait till this time.
Chairman, I might have been muted, I'm sorry. Um, you can't start to talk about the application and open it up, because this, you can't start the public hearing until the notice time.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. All right. Uh, yeah, this is a area variance for a proposed garage for cars and storage. I'd like to open the public hearing at this time. Oh, well, he's, he's speaking. Anyone ask that person? Uh, Brad, you want to talk?
Oh, yes, um, so I was, um, looking to build an attached garage, and like you said, just for car storage and, you know, this yard tool storage. Um, I think the setback was twenty feet, and I need about, it's like eleven feet variance, maybe, just over ten-foot of variance is what I'm looking for.
Okay, um.
Mr. Chair?
Anybody on the board have a question?
Mr. Chair, if you'd like, I can go over it real quick.
Yes, that would be great, thank you.
Yeah, it's in the R-one zone with a twenty-foot side setback. The applicant is asking for ten, ten point, um, ten feet, eight inch relief from the setback, um, at the front closest to Market Drive, which, that would be the, the variance, ten, ten-foot, eight-inch, that he's asking for. It's a area variance in the R-one, again, of a twenty-foot side setback.
Thank you. Maybe we have one more minute, and we'll, you can open our public hearing.
May I ask questions?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Um, I was, I was wondering, when did the, it used to have a garage, correct, the house?
Yes, um.
And that would be on the west side of the building?
For, yeah, on the opposite side of where I'd like to build.
Okay, and that was just a single garage?
Yeah, the previous owners of the house, um, renovated that, and they turned it into like another bedroom, or another room.
Okay, and then if you were to get this variance, um, are you also considering any kind of sidewalk or paving along the east side of that addition?
Um, yeah, I would like to, um, get rid of the driveway that's on the, um, the original driveway, and then the, the scrap.
The, on the west side of?
Yep, and then, um, and then where the proposed driveway is, I would like to put, um, our proposed garage is, uh, a new driveway and sidewalk on that side, just swap it the other time.
But only up and over the garage, correct?
Yep, just up to the garage, yes.
Nothing along the side?
Nope.
All right, thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, all right, any other questions from the board? Okay, at seven thirty, uh, we can open our public hearing. Does anyone else want to speak? Okay, um, if no additional questions, I'd like to, uh, get a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll bring that motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. McNabb?
Yes. Okay, if the board has no additional questions or comments, and nothing from the peanut gallery, um, I'd like to get a motion for Brad Pigalinski, uh, pursuant to section two, two seven six dash B, town law, of an area variance, uh, with a site plan prepared by George Fornum, depicting premises proposed for sixty-seven Market Drive, and, uh, that he has met and conducted public hearing in August twenty-seventh, and considered all the relevant facts and circumstances of the subject matter concerning the area variance application, and would like to make a motion to approve it. Somebody make that motion?
I'll make that motion to approve it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just add, consistent with Mr. Lewis's statement and the application from the applicant, the relief will be in the nature of ten feet, eight inch.
Side setback.
Correct, sorry.
I wrote it down, I didn't write it, sorry.
That's perfect, thank you.
We get a second?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mr. McNabb?
Yes. For the next, I have a building. There's an area variance for Ronald and Sharon Apples, for thirty-seven sixty-three Lewis Road. Are they here?
Yes.
Did you, you, uh, pause a little bit?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, yes, you can hear me, okay.
Tell us a little bit about what you, you're asking.
Yes, and thank you for the opportunity to allow me to do so. Um, my husband and I own, um, thirty-seven sixty-three, thirty-seven sixty-five, and thirty-seven sixty-seven Lewis Road, and we reside in, at thirty-seven sixty-five, and two of the, of our children live in the other houses that we own. Our daughter and her family are looking to add five hundred and seventy-six square feet, which is two rooms, to the residents at thirty-seven sixty-three to accommodate their family. They're pretty much outgrowing the twelve hundred square feet that they're in, a little bit more room. Um, we are requesting a variance since we are sixty-two feet deficient to the rear of the house where we, it's really the only place we can set an addition, um, we're deficient on the seventy-five-foot, uh, setback requirement. Um, we can't go, the one side, there's the well, we have a right-of-way, which is a driveway to the front, and on the other side of the house, we have electrical conduit and other water, the water comes in from another well through there. Um, so we are, um, requesting the variance to build this structure.
Hey, Bill, uh, you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, it's the R-two zone. Um, again, she does, I've been on-site several times for other inspections, um, it is pretty much the only spot for that house to put this addition. She is asking for a sixty-two-foot, um, with, uh, variance from the seventy-five-foot rear setback, uh, but again, she has a challenging lot, the, the house is there, um, she has a garage on the, at the top of the map, there's a, a garage with an addition, again, her well and the right-of-way in the front. So it's a area variance for sixty-two feet.
Thank you, um.
May I say one more?
As the board.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, please?
I, I just wanted to add something.
Go ahead.
Okay, the, the boundary in question here is-
She has a garage on the, at the top of the map, there's a, a garage with an addition, again, her well and the right-of-way in the front. So it's a area variance for 62 feet.
Thank you, um.
May I say one more? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, please?
I, I just wanted to add something.
Go ahead.
Okay, the, the boundary in question here is completely wooded. Um, the, the neighbors own, um, five acres adjacent to that and, um, you can't really even see their house, so I, it, it wouldn't be a problem for them either, that is according to them.
Okay, thank you. Um, has everybody got a chance to look at the application? Have we determined that it is complete?
There's that way to me. I, I had the fire meeting Jeremiah and walked into property and I agree with Mr. Apples about, um, the wooded area and not even seeing the other house, they wouldn't see the addition.
Thank you. Alright, uh, I'd like to get a motion to declare the ZBA as the lead agency for a CECL and classify it as type 2 action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, CECL, and which is exempt from further environmental review. Will you make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Philly?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Snadnaff?
Yes.
I'd like to get a, a motion and schedule a public hearing for this application for next month at September 24th at 7:05 PM.
I'll make that motion.
To be determined.
I'm heading off.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Philly?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Snadnaff?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, next, uh, item of business, is there any questions by the applicant or anything? Or move ahead? Alright, we'll see you there on September 24th. Uh, next item of business is an area variance, Kixon Stones Holding, Stuart Thomas, 1073 Middleline Road, 176 point dash 1, 23.2. Mr. Lewis, can you bring us up to date on this a little bit?
It's a, it's a lot of record on Middleline, it's on the corner of Middleline and Circle C Road in the R2 district. Um, the applicant is looking for, the, the only area variance that he is asking for is the size of lot, the five acre minimum in the R2. Don't have the calculation here of what the proposed, the size of lot is currently. But he's asking for relief from the five acre minimum size of the lot. There are some, with talking to him, which I, I believe Stuart will be bringing up some items that were found in the current survey of the, the lot. That's pretty much all I have until the applicant, uh, chimes in and gives his little spiel.
He is, uh, Mr. Thomas, uh, yeah, Aaron Thomas, is he, uh?
It's Stuart Thomas.
Stuart Thomas, okay.
Alright, sorry about that.
Yeah, sorry, okay.
Okay, so I've got two maps, the map in front of you is a plot plan, um, which, uh, I, uh, have all the appropriate setbacks on. Um, the, the issue that we had was there's some, uh, some, um, grave markers on the site and we had a talk, Bill and I, and we talked about the setbacks and everything else. And I, the lot was created and then there were some takings, so the lot is actually a hair smaller than it was originally. So as you can see, I'm asking for relief of 1.986 acres, which is how the lot was originally, uh, originally done, other than the takings from the, uh, town and the county highway. Um, the setbacks are all the setbacks that are legally permitted. The, um, distance from the grave markers, I was taught how to be at least 50 feet, which if you look at this plot plan, the proposed structure is, uh, at least 50 feet. Um, there is an existing well, which I, uh, put 100 foot dotted line and, uh, basically it's a great lot, 38, 3.018, 1.14 acres, um, mostly wooded. Uh, there's a 1988 double wide on there now, um.
Are you living there?
No.
Do you plan on living there?
No.
Mr. Chair, what zoning was when you, when did you buy this?
July 28th, 2020.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Yeah, it, uh, it's like, uh, Mr. Thomas said, the home on the lot is a 1988 mobile home, it has been in disrepair for years, it has been in violation, we've been out there multiple times at the town. It, uh, Mr. Thomas was, uh, had purchased it this year and again, he's in front of us for the variance, for the relief of the, from the five acre to, I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas, I forgot what the 1.0.
3.014, you're asking for relief for 1.986?
Yeah, he's asking for the, the, the 1.5986 relief from our five acre zoning. But the, the home that's on the site is pretty much uninhabitable at the way that it sits.
Okay. Um, can I get a motion to declare a ZBA as lead agency for the CECL and classify it as type 2 action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which is exempt from further environmental review?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Philly?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Snadnaff?
Yes.
Okay, uh, this time I'd like to get a motion to set a public hearing for the applicant next month, September 24th at 7:15.
I'll make that.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Philly?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Snadnaff?
Yes.
Before Mr. Thomas leaves, can I just ask a question of interest?
I, I guess you can ask it.
I was just out of curiosity, the, uh, the dates on the tombstones?
I, I have not been able to read any of the tombstones. Um, someone said that they read 1797, um, and basically, they just write grave markers that have been abandoned, private grave markers have been abandoned.
I was just interested, thank you very much.
Okay, there's a homework assignment for you.
Yeah.
Hello?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh?
Hello?
Yes, Karen, go ahead.
Yes, I'm the, uh, chairperson for the Historic Structures and Places Committee for the town, and those are very early stones that are in, uh, that cemetery there. And possibly before the next, uh, open meet, the open hearing next, next month, I'd like to suggest the possibility of having actual flags put at the closest stones so that you could actually see how close 50 feet is to the corner of that proposed house. I, personally, I would not want, uh, my house being that, that close to those stones. And I don't, I think it's kind of unfair historically to have the house quite that close. And looking at the map, why can't it go 50 feet to the left, a little bit more toward the existing driveway? That's, that's my take on, uh, this proposed, uh?
Okay, well, when we have our public, uh, hearing, we can address that.
We can talk about that too?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Karen?
Yes.
Have you noticed carefully on the plot plan?
Yeah.
A plot plan is proposed, um, I'm sure that, uh, Bill will make sure that everything is going to meet the code when there's actually a building permit applied to. So it's, that's not something that's set in stone, excuse my, pardon that.
Okay, that's fine. I just felt I should at least, uh, pop up and, uh, speak to this. You'll hear from me next time too, thank you very much.
Karen, if you want to call me, I can give you my number, if that's okay.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
My cell phone is 518?
Yeah.
248?
248.
0222.
22, 0222?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, that sounds good, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Alrighty.
Moving right along. We set our, we set our public hearing to the next one on the list. Do we get extra money this month? Um, is an area variance by, uh, Active Solar Development LLC in Sodom and Road, 163 point dash 1, 56.11.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, just a point of order, uh, as Mr. Chairman and the board members know, uh, I will not be acting on or advising in connection with this application. And Mr. Craig has undertaken the, uh, matter and is engaged on it.
Mr. Philly with us?
I'll be muting myself at this time.
Okay, thank you. Nina, do you see, do you see him? Well, uh, I think we can, uh, one of the questions that are, uh, before we even get into anything, um, on question nine. From our, our chair, she wanted to know, uh, the proposed action meet or exceed state energy code requirements. And she said, question nine is a, oh, wait a minute, this is an updated one, you have, yes. Alright, so I guess you answered that? Uh, where's everybody? Alright, good. Frank, you're with Creighton Manning, I'm guessing you're the only one I don't know.
I'm with Active Solar Development and?
Okay, great, great.
Ryan Farnham.
You want to tell us a little bit? Would you like to tell us a little bit about your property?
Sure, do you have a Ryan Farnham as well from Creighton Manning?
Mr. Chairman? There he is. Alright, hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Alright, um, hi, my name is Ryan Farnham with Creighton Manning Engineering, and on behalf of Active Solar Development, uh, we are presenting the Sodom and Road Solar Farm to you guys to seek an area variance. Um, Frank is here as well with Active Solar, he'll be able to answer any questions you may have. We appreciate you taking the time to consider our application. Uh, the Sodom and Road Solar Farm is proposed to be located at 434 Sodom and Road, uh, which is just north of the intersection of Murray Road and New York 29. Um, it's going to be, it's proposed to be located in primarily open fields, um, just behind the recycling facility. Uh, the solar farm is proposed to generate approximately 6.7 megawatts. Uh, the parcel that the property, or that the project is proposed is zoned R2 Royal District and is approximately 46.97 acres in size. Uh, this project will consist of ground-mounted solar panels, uh, that will include on the project, equipment pads, chain link fence, and a gravel access road. Uh, in accordance with the town code for solar farms, uh, this proposed project will meet the requirements for zoning district, the minimum property size, and the equipment setback. However, the proposed project is seeking relief on the following code, that solar energy equipment may cover no more than 10% of the property on which it's located. So tonight, we are seeking an area variance for the coverage requirement to increase to 15.84%, a 5.84% relief. Uh, this small degree of relief we are seeking will cause, we believe will cause no detrimental impacts on health, safety, and welfare of the neighbors. Uh, the solar panels are considered safe for both human health, um, and environmental reasons. Uh, this project will be completely fenced in. Um, also on the site is already fenced in, so it'll have two fences along Sodom and Road, or sorry, there's a fence already on Sodom and Road in this project, which is behind the building, will be fenced in. Uh, the benefit to, one of the reasons we're seeking relief is, uh, to be able to use the property as efficiently as possible, uh, for a permitted use. Um, and due to the required configuration of the panels, um, that small relief will be required. Um, the neigh, the surrounding neighborhood, the neighbors of this project, um, consist of open land, commercial operations, and residential homes. Uh, the proposed configuration of the panels and the tree clearing proposed, uh, will not be apparent to the surrounding areas as screening around the property will be maintained. Uh, the, this project will also provide, uh, community benefit by allowing local residents to access clean renewable energy at a discount. Um, this project will also add to the tax base without increasing traffic, water, or other resources that may, uh, accompany a project. Uh, so we thank you for your consideration, uh, as we seek a relief of 5.84% on that area variance.
I just got a couple of other questions, if you don't mind?
Yeah, go for it.
Well, first, does the board have any questions?
Yes, I do. The, my question is, how much will this cost the residents and for how long?
Second, this is fine, um, it doesn't cost the residents anything. Um, I think there's some additional benefits that Ryan didn't touch on. Um, the current site is the old Gaba Brothers, uh, auto recycling junkyard, right? Assume you guys are familiar with it.
Yeah, yep.
Right now, that is Metro Metals, Charlie Van Hall's operation, which operates in the front section. Um, Charlie's permitted for the full parcel size as a recycling plant. Um, this, he contacted us because we did the project adjacent to this on the old Engels Mine. Um, and Charlie's looking for something to get revenue from that, and this was kind of a lose impact to his neighbors, so I think as you're considering this area variance, be mindful of that. The other thing I wanted to tie back to our last, um, experience with the town is, we, it was a great project for, I think, for us, for... it was a great project for, I think, for us, for the town, um, we've found some additional money. Uh, we've offered the town a hundred thousand dollar fund to help with the many challenges you guys have right now between, you know, the, the, uh, between COVID and between the, um, town hall relocation. So, um, I live in Sodom and County, um, and it's, you know, we're trying to be good neighbors here. So when you ask, what is the cost to the, um, constituents or the, the, the people of Milton, I guess, uh, what are you directing that to?
Yeah, I was gonna just... Well, I, I was just, um, we were actually talking about it. I, uh, saw this application and, uh, I know you're not a net meter, a net metering situation. That costs everybody pocket money.
You could just check that, uh, in June, the PSC revised net metering laws.
Right, no, I know that. I, I have a, I, I waded through about seventy-five percent of, uh, one of their white papers. Oh my God.
Your website's pretty chuff.
We did, there, there is, uh, uh, from there and, and nothing is, I, it was so complex that I don't consider myself an expert to, uh, deal with the subject intelligently enough to make decisions. What I was wondering is the, uh, project itself, what, what makes you want to go for this, like, you said maximum use of the property. I, I, I get why developers want to put more houses on there. Why do you need more solar?
So, so if you look at this particular property, it has a north slope. Uh, so as we look at inter-row shading, from one panel shades the next panel, the, what you'll find is that, uh, we've got to space out our panels further because of the nature of this property. You'll also see there's a utility easement that runs through the property. Um, and we also have to set back from the neighbors', uh, trees, it, because of shading. So with the property setbacks, with the, uh, not impacting the neighbors' trees and, and visual screening, it, it becomes a, a smaller project. Um, and the economics of the project and the benefits of the landowner in the form of a lease versus other things that he can do on that particular parcel, um, start to rear their head without some sort of relief. Does that make sense?
You're basically saying it's a cost benefit kind of a thing?
It's a cost benefit kind of a thing, but it's also somewhat of the nature of the, the parcel being northerly sloped as opposed to the last parcel we did was southerly sloped. And ultimately, you have fixed costs on these projects where you interconnect to the utility. And as you talk about community benefits, that's a, another conversation of resiliency and the amount that we pay into substation upgrades. But, um, you know, you have to amortize that fixed cost of, you know, connection over X amount of solar panels. So that, that is a part of the consideration, but another part of the consideration is to the landowner and best and highest use for the, the back lot there and the many permitted uses that he could have on that that are, I think, probably, uh, more offensive than that's.
Yeah, what I'm more concerned with, you, you, one of the things that I read in this PSC, and sorry to injure your ears, guys.
Yeah.
Is, is that, um, and I'm not positive about this, but it, it seems like, uh, I imagine you must have a, you know, a, you go in with an anchor, that's one of the things they talked about, and I would imagine you're selling to national grid, is that correct?
So, can I, I, I'm just going to backtrack into the paradigm of community solar, right? Or CD two?
Sure.
How you would have seen it in, uh, um, the PSC documents. So, community solar is compensated on a tariff called VDER, Value of Distributed Energy Resources. That tariff design, which is changed as of six twelve twenty twenty, is meant to have no impact on ratepayers. And if you looked at the latest PSC ruling, you'll see that they declare that in that it's the matter of distributed energy resources, uh, is the, is the case. Um, so the design of the tariff is meant such that you don't have a ratepayer impact. There's many argue in our industry that the hundreds of millions of dollars that we've paid at substation upgrades is a benefit that doesn't get captured in a tariff, as well as the benefit of resiliency to the grid where we're actually generating near the substation doesn't get compensated. So, um, there's a lot of discussion when you read through the PSC documents as to, there's comments from various stakeholders, whether it be the utilities, solar developers, um, other interested parties regarding their opinion on net metering, on community solar, anchor tenants versus residential tenants. I can tell you on this, the Murray Road one, we're almost a hundred percent residential, which they actually, in the last PSC document, they actually said was a net benefit to the ratepayer. So...
Is it possible you could provide that to us next time?
Sure.
That would be great. That would leave a...
I won't cost, I could cost the entire PSC document, but yeah, I'm, I'm happy to provide...
No, no, I don't, I don't want the whole thing. Okay. Uh, any other questions, gentlemen? All right, I'd like to, uh, ask for a motion to declare ZBA as lead agent on this application and classify this action as unlisted SECR.
I'll make that motion, uh, make the, the lead agency on the SECR report.
Is it unlisted?
Unlisted. I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Snaznam?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to get a motion to schedule a public hearing for this application for next month, September twenty-fourth at seven thirty P M.
I'll make the motion to schedule the public hearing for September twenty-fourth at seven thirty. I'll second the motion.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Snaznam?
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no other, uh, any further matters, so, thank you, gentlemen, for coming and answering our questions so candidly, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, we will, uh, talk to Mr. Craig about this. And, uh, I, the motion to, Karen, unless there's something else, anybody have anything else to bring up?
I'll make the motion to adjourn. Second the motion.
Thank you all.